I wish to call to order the July 19th meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. I will note for the record that Commissioner Jones and I are present in the Nat U Hill Room, and Commissioner Thomas is joining us virtually. So with that, we'll have the public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you. And we'll now move on to department updates. Let's start with Kathy Hewitt of the Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a few things for you today. First of all, the CDC is launching the Bridge Access Program for COVID vaccines this fall, and that is to help ensure uninsured and underinsured adults will continue to have access to no-cost COVID vaccinations as these products transition to the commercial market. CDC will partner with state and local public health agencies, health centers, and pharmacies to ensure that all adults nationwide maintain access to the vaccines. This program is just a temporary bridge, however, and is scheduled to end at the end of 2024. Children who are uninsured can continue to receive COVID-19 vaccines at no cost through the CDC's Vaccines for Children Program, which has been around since 1994. Another vaccination update, the Monroe County Public Health Clinic, which is a partnership between the Monroe County Health Department and IU Health Bloomington, is holding a special Smart Start catch-up vaccination clinic for school-aged children on Saturday, August 12th, from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. Parents should call 812-353-3244 to make an appointment for the clinic or if they have any questions. The clinic is located at 333 East Miller Drive. The clinic also offers other vaccinations, including COVID vaccines by appointment. And most of our surrounding counties are also scheduling special dates and times this summer for school catch-up vaccinations. You can find out more by visiting www.in.gov/health/immunizations and clicking on the Smart Start link on the left. And many of us in the county, or a large part of us in the county, recently experienced lengthy power outages with the recent storms, and we will have continued stormy weather patterns right now, so we wanted to share some important tips to keep you and your family well, especially around food safety. So these are the tips to do before. Purchase and keep appliance thermometers in your refrigerator and freezer. The refrigerator should be at 40 degrees or below, and the freezer should be at zero degrees. So if you have empty spots in your freezer, you want to freeze containers of water in gel packs to fill the space. With the doors closed, a full freezer can keep your food safe without power for 48 hours or two days. A half-full freezer will only keep your food safe for 24 hours without power. A refrigerator can keep food safe for up to four hours. So have a cooler or frozen gel pack handy in case you have to remove your food from the refrigerator to keep it cold. And if you think your power will be out for a long time, go and purchase ice or dry ice early, and add gel packs to your refrigerator or cooler to help keep things at 40 degrees. From personal experience, if you wait too long, all of the ice will be gone. So after, when the storm is over and your power is back on, you want to check your food. If the power was out for over four hours without any extra cold source, you need to throw those perishables away. That's meat, fish, cut fruits and vegetables, eggs, milk, cheese, and leftovers, not cheese. But check the temperatures of food kept in coolers or your refrigerator if you had an added source, and throw out any food that's above 40 degrees. If you have appliance thermometer in your freezer, check to see if it is at least 40 degrees or below, and you could safely refreeze or cook thawed frozen food that contains ice crystals where it's at 40 degrees or below. And when in doubt, you know, follow the old adage, "When in doubt, throw it out." And lastly, just a lot of people were talking about generators during this last power outage. There are some safety tips you need to know about that. So portable generators, they produce carbon monoxide, which is a poison gas that's odorless, colorless, that kills without warning. So you never want to use a portable backup generator inside your house or garage, even if your doors and windows are open. Generators should be placed outside, more than 20 feet from your home, doors or open windows. And if you use them, make sure you have battery-operated or battery-backup CO detectors near every sleeping area in your home. And check these CO detectors regularly to make sure they are functioning properly so that they will be sure to work when you need them. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Wow, that's a lot. Any comments or questions?
I have a question that may not be appropriate for you, but there are some medications that must be kept cold all the time. In particular, I'm thinking of insulin. Is there anything that people can do if they aren't prepared and they lose their power to keep their medications safe?
Yeah, that's a great question. They do have some items, like if you go camping, that can work off cars. So I'm sure that there's options out there. I would imagine, like, if you're in a house, a cooler with ice, you would always have to be double-prepared if you had medicines that had to be kept cold. So I can be happy to get a little research on that and get back with you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Thomas, do you have anything?
No questions, thank you.
I just want to know where you can buy dry ice.
The Chocolate Moose used to sell it, or the building next to the Chocolate Moose, so I will look into that and give you that information as well, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Now we'll move on to Lisa Ridge of the Highway Department. She has some updates as well for us.
Good morning. I did want to announce some road closings that are coming up, and then a couple that we've had in the last couple of days for emergency reasons, due to the rain that we had on Monday evening. May Road is closed today for a repair where we had a collapse in the roadway. That should be open at the end of the day. Old State Road 37 South in the right lane, southbound, in the 9900 block, is closed at this time. We hope to reopen that lane on Friday afternoon if everything goes okay. We had some buckling of the road in the area, so we have crews down there now to dig it out, but then we'll have to repave it. So you can get through, but you would have to use the middle lane, the left lane, to go southbound, but I would proceed through there with caution. Bell's Road, we have a bridge replacement. The closing for that will happen on Tuesday, July 25th. This will be closed until approximately November this fall. So this was planned. We've had signs and we've had notices out for this upcoming closure. And then I just wanted to briefly show you what we had been working with IT. We always put our public notices out to all the emergency services every week for road closures, lane restrictions, trying to give the public enough information of where we're working at, what road construction projects we have going on. So we've been working with our GIS department and IT. We usually always did this with just a PDF, readable document on our website, but now we have it linked to as a map viewer. So all you have to do is click on the road construction map on our county highway page, go to the area of interest or where you might be traveling, and we will up this. We actually, as I drove here this morning, we put on Old State Road 37 South, and it was on there by the time I got to the courthouse. So it works wonderfully, and we'll work out the bugs as we go forward. But our GIS department, if you just click on the road segment that's highlighted, then it'll give you a detail box of what's happening, the dates, contact information of who is doing that project, whether it be in-house or a contractor, and you can contact them for additional questions or concerns that you have. Of course, it's color-coded, for red for being a closure, or it would be yellow for lane restrictions. Again, we'll probably tweak this as we go forward, but we think it's a great asset for all of us to keep updated and keep the public more informed. Just some people like a visual better than reading a PDF document, so. So thank you to GIS and our IT department for this, so that's all I have.
Super, wow. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, thank you very much, you, GIS, and IT.
Commissioner Thomas.
This is really great. It is much cleaner than the state site because the state is reporting so many more things, but I find the state site less and less useful as time goes on, so simple is better, and really appreciate this. This is really a wonderful thing to be doing. Thank you.
And I appreciate the fact that there are dates given with these, so it's really much more completed, up-to-date.
And we also put in there that those dates can be adjusted due to weather, and that's kind of what we've run into in the last week. Some of our subdivisions are being paved this week. We've had to adjust them each week by about one day just because of the weather events, but we do try and keep that all updated and the notices out when we know that happens, so.
Thank you. Are there any other departments with updates? Seeing none, let's move on to public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda. We have a limit of three minutes per speaker, and if you wish to speak, please identify yourself and indicate whether or not you're a Monroe County resident. Looks like we have someone here with us in the Nat U Hill Room. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Darrell Ruble, Monroe County resident. I live right here in town, too. But, you know, I wanted to say, that covered bridge on Maple Grove they put in, that is a work of art. That's one of my favorite hangouts. Me and my ex-wife used to go out there years ago, enjoy the view, you know, and stuff. But I was out there the other day. That thing is beautiful. Them guys are artists. They remind me of the WPA guys that done a lot of stuff around Bloomington. Them guys need to be remembered. We need more plaques for the WPA guys and the guys that do stuff like that at Maple Grove on that covered bridge. For instance, WPA done a thing around Rose Hill Cemetery. That thing is like a tank. They built that thing to last a thousand years. And I lived on Kirkwood, and I watched them rip that up from, like, Pine Street around the corner to, like, Hankels around Clydeoffers on Third, and they had a heck with time getting that thing up, because them guys took some big-time care when they built that thing. That thing was in the ground 20 feet, and they had loaders trying to dig it. That's when men were men, right there, man. We need guys like that more. And I keep bringing up that Maple Grove thing, man. That thing's beautiful. It was like when I drove through it, it was like traveling back in time. And the timber they used is unbelievable. That's a great thing. Thank you for preserving our heritage when the city of Bloomington is tearing everything down, putting up these high-rises, blocking out the sun, the developers coming in buying Bloomington up. You guys are preserving it by doing the covered bridge. Thanks a lot. I'm kind of full of compliments today because I'm tired of being negative about things. I've had a rough two or three years. I've lost a daughter and a wife in the last couple of years. But I will go in a positive way. I want to start going in a positive way a little bit, okay? You know, but, you know, a few compliments. I want to save the best for last. I was at the Justice Building the other day, and I didn't catch her name, but she treated me. I went in there and I asked her if I could get some help, and couldn't really get help from anybody else, and her name's Kat. She's been there forever. And she said, "Can I help you?" I said, "Yeah, can you help me?" And I said, and she said, "Can I buy you a Pepsi?" I've never had that happen to me before in the Justice Building. Super-nice keeper. She's a keeper. She is a keeper, Kat. You guys might know her, right? I want to know her full name, and I want to find out. However, anyway, Dina that works in your office, I've called up here a lot of times to find out when the meetings are going and what time. I know they're usually at 10, but I like to know. So I come up here sometimes, and she's super. She's another keeper, and I'm saving the best for last. I was at the Monroe County Jail last night, and I've got a relative in there. He's in jail, went in there, tried to get some information. Corporal Stevenson treated me with the best respect I've ever had in that jail. Treated me with respect, treated me like a man, helped me out a bunch, and I appreciate that guy. He's a keeper, too. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your nice words, and I agree with you. The covered bridge is a work of art and a feat of engineering. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who has public comment to offer? Seeing none, let's move on to approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes for July 5th, 2023.
Second.
Were there any corrections or comments? None? Okay, I'll ask Mr. Cockrell to call the roll.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Next item, please.
I move approval of the Claims Docket Accounts Payable, July 19th, 2023, and Payroll, July 14th, 2023.
Second.
And we have Ms. Smiller here to talk with us.
Good morning. The Accounts Payable Claims Docket for July 19th, 2023 is $1,385,922.88. The Payroll Docket for July 14th, 2023 includes $1,608,184.42 in direct costs, and the remaining $683,796.04 were for indirect costs for a grand total of $2,291,980.46.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Commissioner Thomas.
None.
No, I don't.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. I will note for the record that we have no reports this week, so let's move on to new business. First item, please.
I move approval of the BTEC Fire and Security Agreement for Justice Building Door Access Changes. Fund name, County General, fund number 1,000, in the amount of $6,647.57.
Second.
And we have Mr. Crowe here for the first of several items.
I'll try to be quick so we don't have to break out sack lunches to get me through this, so.
You're buying. I'm sorry.
Hope everybody's doing all right this morning. First item I have up here is for two of our swipe lock systems at the Justice Building. One of them is a swipe lock on the exterior of the building leading into the Sheriff's Department that is non-standard to all the rest of our swipe lock systems. It's begun to have issues. We've had to have it worked on, so it's time to replace it and get it current with our other system. The other belongs to our server room. It has been defunct for a while. It doesn't communicate, so we have to use key override to get into that server room. So we need to have that lock set replaced as well. So this request is to approve the replacement of both of those swipe locks.
Questions or comments? Either of my colleagues. I don't have any either. This was all pretty straightforward in our packet, so is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Next item.
I move approval of the BTEC Fire and Security Agreement for Johnson Building Camera Replacement. Fund name, County General, fund number 1,000, in the amount of $2,255.
Second.
Again, we have Mr. Crowe.
Thank you. Yes, one of the 180-degree security cameras mounted on the exterior of the building has failed. We've had it worked on a couple of times. BTEC did what they could to keep it going, but it is defunct at this time, presents a security issue for us. So this request is to approve the replacement of that camera. I do recognize the price tag for one camera replacement. Most of that is absorbed in the cost of that camera. These exterior security cameras, the price has gone up with those with everything else, so.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Thomas?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Jones? Again, this was all straightforward in our packet. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Next item.
I move approval of the Evans Time Inc. Service Agreement. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in the amount of $1,195.35.
Second.
Mr. Crowe again.
So our Monroe County parking garage has a entry gate controller that employees swipe their badge, the arm raises. For some time, we've been having this intermittent problem where the arm will come up, the vehicle will pass through the detection loop, but the gate arm will not go down, which has allowed members of the public unauthorized access into our garage, and it's also caused some piggybacking amongst employees trying to get their way in to get into work in the mornings. So this has been an issue for us for a while. We've had Evans Time come back down to look at it a couple of times, and this last time, diagnostic showed that the controller boards failed on it. So this request is to approve their proposal to replace that control board in the gate arm.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Thomas.
And so this is beyond warranty for the original purchase, I assume?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones? I was just going to ask if this is something that's impacted because of weather? Is this board exposed in any way?
No, the board is contained inside the control box, which is inside the parking garage undercover. It's not exposed to the weather. So this has either been due to age of the component, because it is an electrical component subject of error, or it's possible with multiple power outages and surges that we see downtown that it may have had an effect on it as well.
Which might be due to the weather. Okay.
There you go. Well, okay, so indirect, possibly.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. I'll call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Oh, I just, now I see a hand up from Lee? Lay?
Lee.
Lee? Sorry, I did not see that before. Did you have a comment, Lee?
Yes, I do. I just didn't see a warranty for this replacement. It doesn't talk about the warranty on the replaced control panel. So the new one, does it have a warranty? And if it does, well, what are the terms?
The terms on the hardware, it's not stated. It is 90 days on the hardware, as long as it's not an electrical issue on our end, one year at that point for normal, what's covered under warranty for that component. That was the original warranty we also got when the gate controller was installed.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item D, please.
I move approval of Matrix Integration Service Agreement for Jail Office Changes. Fund name, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, fund number 1138, in the amount of
Second.
Mr. Crowe.
So as we all know, the jail's been doing a lot of changing around, some changes to office space, things like that. They recently decided to make an area into office space that was currently used to storage, so it provides electrical but does not provide either networking access. So this request is for Matrix Integration to come in and install two pairs or four drops for network access for multiple desks inside that space.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
It sounds like we're moving forward with new things in the jail. Yes. Okay, any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Next item, please.
I move approval of the Toshiba Copier Fleet Agreement. Fund name, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, fund number 1138, in the amount of $4,534 per month for 60 months.
Second.
And again, Mr. Crowe.
So at current, one half of our copier fleet is owned by us, and the other half is still on a lease. What I'm looking at is our owned machines are all in excess of 10 years old, have exceeded their copier counts, and we're also to the point where we're not going to be able to get parts from RICO to service those copiers. So based on state QPA contracts, I've decided to go with Toshiba to replace 32 of those owned, aged-out copiers. It is a 60-month lease. At the end of that 60 months, we do have a dollar buyout per machine, and we will own the equipment. Terms of that are for $4,534, excuse me, a month, which actually is a reduction in cost of our previous contracts by about $2,500 a month. So we will see our reprographics monies, the budget on that actually drop a little.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Commissioner Thomas?
None.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I'd like to know if the copiers that are being replaced, if they're surplused or what happens with those.
The owned machines, I actually, Toshiba has connected me with a third-party buyer who will buy up that equipment. They'll come in and give us an appraisal of all the machines that we have that we want to sell to them, and then they will give us a quote on what they're willing to pay for it, and then I would bring that up so that the items could be declared as surplus, and then we could sell them to that company. Some of the older copiers, they may or they may not take because of the age of them. There's no resale value for any of the components inside of it. Those items would have to go to recycle, surplus recycle, but the intent is to get as many sold as we can to this third party.
Excellent. I would prefer that than having them go into a landfill, basically.
Anything we currently recycle now, we use a company called Tech Recyclers out of Indianapolis, they are zero landfill. They strip everything down to its bare components. Plastics go recycle, metals get melted and resold, so they are a zero landfill company. So that's why we use them when we do, if we have something that's unserviceable and can't be sold, that's why we use them to do it, because we know they are a zero landfill company.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe, for everything.
Thank you very much.
Next item.
I move approval of Richard Small Engine Repair Service Agreement. Fund names, County General, and non-reverting. Fund numbers, 1,000, 1178, and 1179, in an amount not to exceed $3,000.
Second.
And we have Ms. Whitmer from the Parks Department here this morning.
We have our Ferris Zero-Turn Mowers serviced at Richards and some other equipment. Most of our equipment repair is done in-house, but if we have either a warranty question or a larger item, we will take it back to the vendor that we purchased it from.
Very good. Questions or comments?
I would just note that it's 3,000 per utilization, so this contract is, so if they took in one item, that item would have the maximum of 3,000, and there isn't a limit of the number of items they could take other than what their budget would allow. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
And Mr. Cockrell is correct? Thank you. I did not understand that. Yes, okay. Questions or comments? Commissioner Thomas?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I don't either. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing up today. Next item.
I move approval of Security Automation System Service Agreement, in the amount of $10,640. No fund name or number.
Second.
And we have Ms. Purdy here.
Yes, I'll be presenting this for the jail.
Yes, I'll be presenting this for the jail commander, as they are at a training this week. Security Automation Systems is going to be relocating a first-floor control panel to accommodate some changes that have been occurring in that particular area. And so this will allow for the movement of that control panel, and they will also upgrade the millwork that's involved there. And there will also be moving and remounting power panels. This is actually going to be paid by the jail commissary. This is all, this work that's being done is for the jail, is for the jails. So they've asked that I present that to you for your approval.
Very good. Questions or comments, Commissioner Thomas?
None, thank you.
No, I don't.
When I was reading through this, it appeared to me that this is one of the things that was discovered, is they were doing the major cleaning that they've been undertaking at the jail. So it's probably good that it was caught before.
They moved around some things, and then more things were, became visible, so.
Yes, yes. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to item H, please.
I move approval of ordinance 2023-26, to transfer parcel to the town of Steinsville.
Second.
And we have Mr. Schilling, I believe. Are you filling in for him, Mr. Cockrell?
I believe he is online.
Okay, there he is. Good morning, Mr. Schilling.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Dave Schilling from the Legal Department. This is a request to transfer a parcel of property in Steinsville to Steinsville that the county commissioners obtained through the tax sale procedures. And it is currently a concern of the town of Steinsville because it has become overgrown with weeds, and they want to obtain the parcel and clean it up. And that's it.
Commissioner Thomas, do you have questions or comments?
I just have a quick question. Can the town of Steinsville then sell this parcel to someone else?
Yes, if they want to. And, you know, frankly, from the county's perspective, putting it back on the tax roll would be a benefit.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I didn't quite understand how large this parcel is.
It's very small. It's one of the small, it may be two, I can't remember what the legal description is, but it may be two-part lots in the town of Steinsville.
That's what it looked like, yes, okay. Okay, well, let's move on to public comment on this item. Did we vote? We need public comment first. Gosh, I'm sorry. No, no, we're good, we're good. And we have someone here in the Natute Hill Room. Morning.
Good morning. My name is Rita.
Could you please speak directly into the microphone? Thank you.
My name is Rita Delauter. And for disclosure purposes, Deana is my daughter. But that has nothing to do with this. In April of 2017, I paid, I came here and paid the taxes, paid $1,036.80 for this property. I did not petition the court because I was shown a receipt where the taxes were paid on it. So I didn't petition the court. Well, I did not know that this property was put up for tax purposes again. I do, what I'm wanting to know is if the commissioners own this property, if I can buy it, my plans are to build a small house there. That's where my home was, and my children grew up. And I was wanting to build a house there. And, but because it was, and I thought I couldn't do that because the taxes had been paid, so therefore I couldn't get the property. And I would just like to know if the commissioners would consider selling this property to me, which I would definitely keep it maintained. And eventually, as soon as I sell my house in Owen County, where I live now, I would build a small house, not a tiny house, but a small house. And I think that that would look better than gravel parking lot. It would be a nice house. I mean, I would get permits and such. But, and I would keep the property maintained until the point of time that I can start building the house. So I would like to ask the commissioners how much, if they possibly could sell the property to me, and how much it would be. And rather than have a parking lot of gravel or eventually sold to somebody who's, well, eventually sold.
Thank you, Ms. Delauter. I'm not in a position to answer that kind of a question.
Yeah, I will take a stab at that. We can sell that property through the sale procedures. So it require, it'd be sold for the average, at least the average of two appraisals. And I, you know, I'll have to look at the statutes to see whether it's going to be something we can select the seller or whether it needs to be put on the market for others to bid on. But it certainly can be sold to another person, rather than transferred to the town.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we continue this item until our meeting next week, which is July 26th. Is that sufficient time to do the investigation, Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion on tabling this item?
Well, that's fine to wait, but I just wondering, wondering if, would I be buying it from the commissioners since they own it, rather than the town of Steinsville?
If I, as I look at Mr. Schilling, I think he's shaking his head yes.
Yeah, yes, right now, the county owns it. So if the county decides to sell it, we'd be buying from the county. If the county sold it to the town of Steins, or transferred it to the town of Steinsville, then the town of Steinsville could choose to sell that property as well.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to delay this until July 26th, 2023. Is there anyone else who wishes to, this would give you a chance, Ms. Delauter, to work with Mr. Schilling, and for Mr. Schilling to help guide us on what can be done. Okay, thank you. Is, if there's no other comment, I'll ask Mr. Cockrell to call, roll on the motion to delay.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
The motion to continue was approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
I move approval of Butler, Furman, and Seaford Inc. Construction Inspection Services Agreement. This is fund name, local road and street, fund number 1169, in the amount of $25,000.
Second.
And we have Ms. Ridge here to talk with us.
Good morning. This agreement is for construction inspection services for the pedestrian improvements at various trail locations across the county. There are seven locations that we will have flashing beacons installed, basically around county roads at the trail crossings. RFPs were accepted in June and scored by three highway employees and staff, and sent to NDOT for review and approval. The seven locations are as follows. Limestone Trail at Delmon Road, Limestone Trail at Church Lane, Clear Creek Trail at Victor Pike, Clear Creek Trail at that road, Bloomington Rail Trail at that road, Bloomington Rail Trail at Roger Street, and Clear Creek Trail at Rockport Road. Federal funds have been approved for 90% through H-SIP Highway Safety Improvement Plan, through the MPO Transportation Improvement Plan for 2024 to 2028. The local match would be $2,500 for this portion of phase of the project. After installation of the flashing beacons, the future maintenance of and responsibility of these beacons will fall under Bloomington Parks and Rec and Monroe County Parks and Rec for future maintenance.
Thank you. Comments or questions, Commissioner Thomas?
No, this is great. So glad to see the federal match, and I appreciate the hard work on keeping everyone safe out there. Thanks.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Any public comment on this item?
I also am pleased with the fact that we're going to be keeping people safe. And I really appreciate all the work on the trails. It's been phenomenal.
Is there any public comment? I think I asked for that already, didn't I? Okay, Mr. Cockrell, roll, please.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. I believe we have two appointments to make?
Yeah, I would like to move to appoint Joyce Polling and John Whiteheart to the Capital Improvement Board.
Second.
Do we take public comment, Mr. Cockrell, on appointments?
Not typically on appointments.
Okay, well, Commissioner Thomas, do you have any comments on this?
I am grateful that these two people stepped up and volunteered to serve on the Capital Improvement Board. Both bring extensive knowledge and experience, second to none, and I'm grateful to both of them.
Yeah, I completely agree. It's very wonderful that each of these people has agreed to do this. And it's a fairly big job they're taking on, so we particularly appreciate their efforts.
I would note for the record also that this appointment is through January 15th of 2024. Is that correct, Mr. Cockrell?
That is correct.
I also, I'm both thrilled that people applied so quickly after putting the Capital Improvement Board in place last, just last week. But I want to urge others, and I'm sorry that I failed to connect with our city counterparts to find out how they're receiving applicants for the CIV Board. But I hope that they will move forward quickly also, so that we can get this up and moving. We do have a bit of a deadline that the state has imposed on us to do a few things before December 1st. So we, of course, will need at least four members of the board to make anything happen. I know that we have received at least one additional application for the board that I have shared on with the county council, and so I hope that that will move things along on their side, too. This is great. And I, like Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Jones, I'm very grateful to Mr. Whiteheart and Ms. Polling for their willingness to participate in this. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. We have some announcements. Indiana Solar for All grant opportunities are available for qualified households. Please go to www.insf.org/participate to see if you qualify, if you're interested in assistance with solar on your residence. In response, last week, we were out at Hoosier Hills Food Bank for their fresh fruit distribution, and we were able to gather diapers, pull-ups, and wipes, and they went quickly. We had a full table of things that people had donated. And I wanted to ask the public if you, again, would participate with us and make donations of those diapers, pull-ups, and wipes. We had a number of requests for larger sizes than what anybody had donated. But there is one more Fresh Friday distribution, August 11th. And we had, there were 708 families that came through for food last week. And all the diapers and supplies like that were gone by noon. So I ask everyone for their help again. It was the first time it had been done. And the folks at Hoosier Hills Food Bank thought it was a great addition to what they're doing. So I ask everyone to help us with that. There is free COVID testing still available through the Monroe County Health Department and at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic. As I said a minute ago, the county council is accepting applications for the Capital Improvement Board. And we also are accepting applications for a limited number of our own boards and commissions. To do that, go to co.monroe.in.us. I'll remind you that we also, the commissioners hold virtual office hours six times a month. You can find out when those are by going to the county calendar. We have blood drives scheduled in connection with the American Red Cross. They will be at IV tech again. Next ones are Wednesday, August 23rd, from 1:00 to 7:00, and Thursday, August 24th, from 1:00 to 7:00. And if you've given blood recently and can't make that, there are drives on Thursday, September 7th, from 1:00 to 6:00, and Friday, September the 8th, from 10:00 to 3:00. As Ms. Ridge noted earlier, we've had heavy rains again. And so I know that at least one person in the county had hail that was larger than a golf ball size that hit her property on Monday. And so I would urge everyone to sign up for the Monroe County Alert System. Again, that's on the county's website. The, there is still assistance funds that are, income-eligible county residents can apply for through their township trustees to help with paying rent and utilities. So I urge you to reach out if you are in need of anything. Is there any, are there any other announcements? Yes, Ms.?
I have, I have a couple things, very quickly. First, I just wanted to note that on July 7th, I was really proud and happy to attend the New Hope mural unveiling event at the New Hope facility. And it was the Tree of Hearts mural. Incredible artwork, and they've included Monroe County because of our support for developing their commercial kitchen. So it's a beautiful mural, and I love the fact that they talked about how when you have mosaics like that, it's about taking broken pieces and making them whole, and it is something beautiful. So I thought that was really great, and want to thank everyone for their support for that. The other thing is the Community Voices for Health group that I've been proud to be part of has issued their final report. And it's about what we learned along the way about getting voices heard in the community and making sure that everyone has input, especially on the issue of health in our community and how we're transitioning into the Monroe County Health Equity Council. So it's been great working with Community Justice and Mediation on this project and moving it forward into the Communities Council. So hopefully, we'll get that on our website and get some additional information on our website for those who are interested in participating on the Health Equity Council. Thanks.
Thank you. Wow, it's 10:52. This has taken a while today. It's unusual. Anyway, we do have multiple items on our work session. At what point would people like to return to complete the work session, or to start the work session? It's 11 o'clock.
Will you come back at 11?
11? Does that work? Great, okay. Well, that concludes this session of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners meeting. We will be back next week, and see you all soon.
Thank you. Thank you.